Notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates in a meeting notice dated October 7, 2024. Furthermore, on that date, a copy of such notice was sent to The Times, the Trentonian, and the Clerk of the Township of Hamilton. It was also posted on the bulletin board at the entrance to the boardroom in the Hamilton Square Administrative Building. Please rise for the flag salute.
Behind you, Rich. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Atwood, can you take us through roll call?
Mr. Salantano?
Here.
Dr. Farrar?
Here.
Ms. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Kanka?
Here.
Dr. McSheen?
Dr. McSheen will not be here this evening.
Ms. Soto?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Byrne?
Here.
Ms. Thornton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Whereas NJSA 10:4-13 requires adoption of the board to go into executive session, be it resolved that the board pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, New Jersey, Title 18A, and the Hamilton Township Board of Education bylaw, Number 0166, hereby enter executive session to discuss a matter involving student matters and human resource matters. Be it further resolved that the minutes of this executive session shall be made public following formal action by the board and/or at the conclusion of any investigation, due process proceedings, or litigation, so long as not prohibited by law and so long as the need for maintaining confidentiality no longer exists. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Again, thank you, everyone, for being so patient. I apologize for the delay. So at this time, I'm going to move the agenda around just a little bit if I can. We have a presentation, and I would like to invite Mr. Finaccio up if I can. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Mr. Finaccio. I'm the proud principal of Crockett Middle School, and this is our eighth grade band led by Ms. Reed and Ms. Gek. They're going to start by doing the flag salute, and then we will proceed to go into the Star Spangled Banner. Good luck, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If you would please remain standing for the playing of our national anthem.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
In the library at 6:00 PM, the topic of the meeting will be making prize come alive. Please visit the district website for future meetings, dates, and topics. It may be October, but we are thinking about summer and summer camp for our HTSD faculty, staff, and staff. Camp proposals are due November 15th. We will again run our four-week camp with before care, and we will continue with our year two of our junior camp counselors. So, high school students who are interested in being camp counselors sometime in late winter, early spring, we will put applications out for those folks, and that is not a volunteer position. Those are paid positions. Each high school is hosting a financial aid information session during the month of October, is primarily to prepare families of seniors for the FASA. But all high school families are welcome to get a jump start on your knowledge on financial aid. Hamilton West hopes hosted their session last night, but if you missed a session, you can go to any of the sessions. Nottingham's is October 23rd, 6:00 PM, in the auditorium, and Steiner's is Tuesday, October 29th, at 6:00 PM, in their auditorium. Again, you do not have to be at that high school to attend that meeting. If you missed a meeting, you can go to another high school's meeting. DCR met yesterday for its first meeting of the year. It was a very productive meeting, and the subcommittees did some work to start off the school year, and I know Dr. McSheen is not here tonight, and next month he will provide a report based on that meeting. Facilities Strategic Planning Committee continues to meet as a large group and also in our Subcommittee Writing Group, and we look to have a final report to you in the next couple of months. On the awards front, I am not going to announce an award from New Jersey School Boards. We're going to have that announced in a couple of minutes, but we also got an award from the New Jersey School Public Relations Association for the 2024 School Communications Award, and we won in the category of photography, and the title of the picture was Holiday Hugs, taken by Laura Gelch. So, we're very excited to have received that award. Some upcoming events and calendar dates to remember. The PTA President's Meeting is Monday, October 28th, at 7:00 PM at Wilson. Our RISE Meeting for Faculty and Staff is October 30th, from 4:00 to 5:00 at Greis in the library. The Facility Strategic Planning Committee is November 11th, at 6:00 PM at Steiner in the cafeteria. DCR is November 12th, at 5:00 PM at Hamilton West. Tomorrow, tomorrow, October 17th, we've put this out a couple of times, everybody we ask to join us in our district and organizations around Hamilton by wearing pink in an effort to paint the town pink for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so, we will be joining, as most other organizations across town will be doing the same thing. We have a College Admissions Panel, 6:00 PM on November 19th, at Nottingham High School. On Tuesday, November 5th, it is Election Day, so go out and vote. Also, all students are off, all faculty and staff have professional development, and Thursday and Friday, November 7th and 8th, all schools are closed for teacher convention. Finally, remind everybody that school safety is everybody's responsibility. We continue to reinforce, if you see something, say something. Something seems out of place, something seems suspicious, then say something. Please do not post on social media requesting feedback. If it's a concern, contact someone. If schools are closed and you feel it's an emergency, call the police. And let's stay focused on making every day count in HTSD. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Rocco. So, at this time, it was actually brought to my attention, so I do apologize, that our student representatives are actually in the audience, but I would like to invite you up here. Please come up to the table. So, please come on up. Now, I know that last month at our meeting, so last month at our meeting, we did swear in two of our student representatives, but Ms. Odom was not able to be here, so we are going to swear you in today. Okay? So, just give us one moment, we'll get all of that ready. Okay? And at this time, I'll move to, while we're getting that ready, we'll go on to Board Announcements. If any Board of Education members have any announcements, I'll start with Ms. Soto.
I just wanted to share that over the past weekend, I attended Hamilton West's Cavalry of Bands. Again, all three high schools performed, and it was a fantastic event, great weather, and it was just nice to see, you know, so many community members there enjoying the great music. I look forward to seeing the young musicians that were here tonight performing in these events in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Dr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mrs. Thornton. So, I am the lucky one that gets to talk about the NJSBA Award. At the end of each academic year, the New Jersey School Boards Association puts out a call asking board members to nominate outstanding programs in their district for consideration. In 2021, our district's COVID response was recognized as an exemplary program. In 2022, Greis's Gladiator Cafe was awarded recognition, and tonight, I'm delighted to announce the New Jersey School Boards has recognized Alexander Elementary School as having an exemplary program titled "The Journey to Becoming a River-Friendly School." And with everyone's indulgence, I will read the submission, because I think that's the best way you'll understand what it's about. This trek began, like so many in public education, with a request for funding. In the spring of 2021, after a year of COVID disruptions, Alexander Elementary School's special education teacher Renee Camilleri and kindergarten teacher Michelle, I think it's Galazuski, and I know that my friend Janice is back there going, no, it's not. I'm sorry, Janice. They asked the Hamilton Education Foundation for $939 to create an outdoor learning space for the school that has 328 students in grades K-5, or did at the time. "We want to get our students back to learning through experiences in a more natural, lower-stress environment," they wrote in the application. "They proposed a garden that would support studying nature. Both knew that the New Jersey School Standards for K-5 asked students to learn about habitats, soil, plants, and ecosystems. What better way to learn than outside in a living lab?" After securing the grant, however, what began as a simple idea for garden morphed into something quite remarkable, thanks to the resources and assistance from Rutgers Cooperative Extension, the Watershed Institute in Pennington, and the New Jersey Audubon Society based in Bernardsville, New Jersey. Rutgers Cooperative Extension delivered more than a garden. Alexander School became the site of a rain garden, the third such garden in the Hamilton Township School District. West and Steiner both have rain gardens, and the fifth public rain garden in Hamilton Township as a whole. There is a rain garden at the library and one in Veterans Park, and the new municipal building will have two rain gardens on its site. Rutgers designed and installed the rain garden, students in upper grades added plants, and kindergarten students laid down rocks. The garden was filled with native New Jersey vegetation, which will attract and feed pollinator insects, birds, and butterflies. Students learned rain gardens promote the purification of water runoff, thus reducing pollutants going into the waterways. Next, a grant secured by the Watershed Institute allowed for a partnership with the New Jersey Audubon Society and the Audubon's program called Eco-Schools. That partnership allowed the school community to seek environmental certifications from both organizations. With guidance from the two nonprofits, learning spilled beyond the classroom walls. Kindergarten students visited the Watershed Institute for a Stream Watch field trip. Students engaged family members in learning at home. The Watershed Institute assisted with the project-based learning about the critical roles of rivers, especially the local Delaware River, which supplies drinking water for more than 17 million people. Becoming a certified river-friendly school had students focusing on four major components: water quality management, water conservation, wild habitat enhancement, and education and outreach. The rain garden addressed the water quality management component. Located at the edge of the school's parking lot, the garden collects water runoff from the pain bin, the runoff waters, the rain garden plants, and then seeps into the ground where it's naturally purified. Students learned about water conservation measures while creating a video for their peers. The peer-to-peer water conservation video was made by students in the Alps Program and was shared in school and with Alexander families. Education and outreach took place in and out of school. Students designed posters about the River Friendly Project, which were hung in hallways. Families received an announcement asking if they could take a River Friendly Resident Survey about water usage. Families scoring as "river-friendly" received a sign for their yards. Students hoped 40 families would complete the certification task. In the end, 55 families became certified. Our teacher Krista Blumenthal asked students to create recycled art by making games using items that couldn't be recycled and therefore would have ended up in a landfill. The students' work paid off. On Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, during an assembly, Alexander School was officially named a river-friendly school by the Watershed Institute, one of 30 New Jersey schools to receive the award since 2010. And last month, New Jersey Audubon awarded the school a green flag, the highest certification level for schools taking significant ecological steps in Audubon's program. Going forward, the rain garden will help teachers meet science standards, but the space will also provide opportunities for math lessons, reading adventures, and writing. In her book, "The Secret of Childhood," Maria Montessori wrote, "There must be provision for the child to have contact with nature, to understand and appreciate the order, the harmony, and the beauty. And thanks to the efforts of many, Alexander students will have those nature-connecting opportunities for years to come." And next May 12th, 2025, at our Mercer County Chapter of New Jersey School Boards, they will be given the official award.
Thank you, Dr. Farrar. Any other announcements?
No. Thank you.
Ms. Stanton?
Nothing this evening.
Ms. Harvey?
Last month, we had the presentation from Alexander for the PTA Reflections Contest, and I just wanted to let everybody know that the contest is on again. It's open to all of our students. It's run through the PTAs, so your PTA should have a chair in charge of reflections. If not, then you should contact the PTA to see if they can get someone to do it. There are six categories. It's an art contest where you will compete at your school level, at your, the district level, the state level, and then the national level. The six categories are film production, music composition, visual arts, dance choreography, literature, and photography, and they're open for different divisions, so that students are judged fairly. So, pre-K to grade two, grades three to five, middle school, six to eight, high school, nine to 12. And this year's theme is accepting imperfections, so each entry should best display that theme for accepting imperfection. And the deadline should be sometime in November. It's set by each school. Each chair has their own deadline, so if you want more information, you should contact your PTA.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Mr. Salantano?
Come in.
Ms. Byrne?
I do. So, I attended the first CPAG meeting. It was well-attended by both parents and staff, and what I heard is that the parents will have direct input, going further, as to what topics they want discussed at these meetings. And as a grandmom to an autistic student, I know how important these meetings can be, so hopefully, these meetings will be a good source of both support and education for the parents who need it in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne. Mr. Kenka?
Yes. Today, I was invited by the Steiner Gallery class. I attended that today. They really grilled me pretty good over there. They had some really great questions and some concerns that they felt needed to be addressed, which I, as soon as I got home, I passed those on to the administration. So, hopefully, we'll be working together, and I reiterate it to them that if you have anything, just reach out to a board member, that's all, and we will do whatever we can to address those concerns. So, it was a good experience, and I thank for the invitation.
Thank you, Mr. Kenka.
So, since he mentioned gallery, I'm sorry, I should have said, because they're all sitting down there front, that I met with the North Gallery class, and several students stayed after. I was there for a couple hours, and it's always fun to talk to students, and there was a request for Chick-fil-A, but I didn't want to tell Mashios that.
Thank you. It's always an honor to be invited to our gallery classes. We need to look no further than our own classrooms for our future leaders, so we appreciate it, and we love the input, because you, as the students, are the ones that are affected by the decisions that we make here. So, we thank you, and we do appreciate the input. So, continue reaching out to us to let us know what's going on. Okay? Okay, at this time, I do want to move on to our student representatives, and I do, would like to have Ms. Lenai Odom sworn in as our official student representative.
Just please repeat after me. Hi, state your name.
Ilenai Odom.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the governments established in the United States and this state?
And to the governments established in the United States and this state?
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Hi, state your name.
Ilenai Odom.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by the bylaws of the Board of Education?
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by the bylaws of the Board of Education?
Of Hamilton Township.
Of Hamilton Township?
For the Office of Student Representative to the Board of Education?
For the Office of Student Representative to the Board of Education?
I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform?
I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform?
All of the duties of that office?
All the duties of that office?
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, welcome. We're excited to have you join us. Would you like to start with your student representative report?
I can.
Okay, wonderful. So, Ms. Lenai Odom, from Nottingham High School.
Hello. So, I missed last meeting, but September was a really good month for us, but it just kind of goes with October, because it's not that far away. October was an amazing month for North Star Nation. We won two football games. We started off the month with a win against West, which was so sweet, because many stars came out to visit us, and it happened at West, so it was very fun to beat them on their own turf. Spirit Week was just last week, a lot of participants. It was really nice for me as a senior to see all the freshmen and underclassmen participating as much as they were. PSATs was last week as well, many participants for that. Our homecoming pep rally just took place, and we also had our homecoming game and dance. Many people came out for the game specifically, where we won against Princeton, 28 to 14, I believe. The dance was very fun as well. A lot of students came out, a lot of exciting moments took place there. I'm sure you can find online. Now that the season, the fall season is wrapping up, and now we're going into winter, everybody's getting excited for the new extracurriculars taking place, so we're focusing on tryouts for step team and for dance team, things of that nature. We're also, one second. We're also this week working with our Pinkout, just like you guys stated. Tomorrow, we're doing the Pinkout. We're very excited to help out, you know, bring awareness to breast cancer, wearing our pink throughout the day. We have our Pinkout game on Friday, which is going to be very fun, because I went last year, and it was great. And our show this year is Little Shop of Horrors, so that's going to be very fun as well. I don't know if many of you know what it's about. It's like a, yeah, it's like a singing plant that eats people, something crazy, bizarre like that, but it's going to be great, and it fits North Star Nation very well. And that's basically it for the Stars, so, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, for Steiner, Gino DiNatale?
Good evening, everyone. So, at Steiner this month, Steiner will be participating in High School Halloween. It's an event where students get into a group, they get a designated classroom, and then they decorate the classroom based on a theme they pick, and then elementary school students or middle school students will come with their families, and they will trick-or-treat at each classroom. It's really cute, it's really, it's a really fun experience. Pinkout has already taken place for some sports, such as field hockey, tennis, and football. Also, senior nights are also taking place for all sports. Our school musical auditions are coming up for a chorus line. The interest meeting is next Monday, I'm pretty sure, October 21st, I don't know what day that is. And then, auditions are October 30th and November 1st. Then, our soccer teams, both boys and girls, volunteered at Miracle League this past weekend. Then, tomorrow, we will also be participating in Paint the Town Pink to show breast cancer awareness, excuse me. And then, Steiner Choir's Fall Cabaret is also October 30th. Our National Honor Society inductions are October 23rd. The tennis team won their first round state tournament just last week, I'm pretty sure. Teens on Fire, this is a shameless bug, but Teens on Fire is an organization that just started up as well. What we do is we just, we help out with the community. We, last year, we went to Alexander to help out with Field Day, and we also do things such as Thanksgiving drives, and we help out during the holidays, and it's a really, really good organization. And then, next Wednesday, English teacher Mr. St. Claris will be doing a presentation with his son Ryan about autism awareness after school in the auditorium. And then, just this Monday, we implemented our Smart Pass system. All those students are the biggest fans of it, we are getting the hang of it, and it's, it is helping with the problems at hand, with like students walking in the hallways and skipping class, so it is being implemented nicely at Steiner.
Thank you very much. So, Cameron Mooney, our representative from West, unfortunately, could not be here this evening. She actually had school events that she was attending. So, I will move on to Board Committee reports, and I will start with Mr. Kenka. He always looks so happy to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The Facilities and Operations Committee met, or Finance and Operations Committee met on the 14th, which was Monday, at 9:00 AM. I thank the board members that were in attendance and senior staff that attended the meeting. We moved in, we moved right into our, Dr. Rocco was unable to attend, which we allowed him to take off that day, and we had, we had an initial discussion of a personnel item, which we talked to in depth, and then we moved into our initiatives items, which the Hamilton Township has been selected or chosen, whatever you want to call it, for a national food service study selection. So, it's, the national study is being conducted by a, it's a federal, it's a federal study, but it's being conducted by a subcontracting organization called Mathematica. They're involved in studies and statistics and all that kind of stuff. So, and we are required to participate in this thing, since we're a part of the National School Lunch Program. The schools that were selected were Greis, Reynolds, North, and Klockner. The week on, the onsite time that they're going to be here is going to be in January, and it'll be mostly a principal interview and survey, and most of the study will take, take place with Mashios. Then, we moved into a, we have a, we had, we were out for bid for our two dishwasher installations and electrical upgrades at Greis and Reynolds. Those bids were due back today, they did come back, and we sent them out for rebid, because the bids came in much higher than, that was previously anticipated, and the new bids came back even higher than the second, than the first bids. So, what we're going to do is we're going to, we're going to sit back, we're going to, we're going to look at what our options are at this time before we make a decision on this. The job will get done, it's just a matter of how it's going to be done. So, just keep that in mind, and we'll keep you updated when, when we, we make a decision on what we're going to do. Then, we talked about the parking agreement we have at Hamilton Grove, where we park our school buses that the district leases or owns, and to get them out of Bell Avenue so we can make some room over there, but we've had, we've had a, an agreement with them for several years, and unfortunate, well, fortunately, we're still there, but unfortunately, they, they increased our, they were trying to increase our rent significantly by 28%, and we had, there was some pushback from the administration and the committee on, on this type of an increase. The current, the current contract expires in October. The district offered to replace a fence and move a tree to keep the monthly costs the same, but they have not got back to us on that, that recommendation. So, what we're going to do is we're, we're going to go back with the, and with our current contract, we're going to just submit that we're going to keep the price the same and pending an ongoing negotiation. So, as of right now, it's, we pay $1,750 a month for a, for better words, a piece of asphalt, and they want to raise it up to $2,250. So, we're, hopefully, we'll be able to negotiate this with a more reasonable price in the future. Then, we had, we had two remaining summer projects, and this is an update. We had, we had the boilers that were being replaced at McGaughyard School, and as everybody knows that I've reported in the past, we pulled out one boiler, they installed that replacement for that boiler, left the other, the other boiler in, and that boiler was successfully started, the new one was successfully started on Monday, this past Monday. So, let them run it, get the kinks out, and then we'll start the demolition of the, of the second boiler and get that up and, and in operation as soon as possible. We did discuss, the other thing that's still left hanging is the auditorium list for West and North, and I reported that the tentative date for installation or delivery was sometime between October 21st and 23rd. We're still hoping for that date to, for that to happen. Then, we moved into our, next, it was our annual maintenance budget and comprehensive maintenance plan, and that budget is on tonight's agenda for approval, and the Mrs. Atwood and the staff has assured us that the district has exceeded the minimum standards that were required to maintain for these, for the maintenance expenditures, so I'm really proud of that. And then, we moved, let's see, we got, I got one more item here. There was a request made by Hamilton Township to, for the use of Steiner's parking lot for Oktoberfest, which is going to take place this Sunday, so, and the board, the committee had no problem with doing that, and that's also on the agenda tonight. One other item that's not on the agenda, yesterday, Mrs. Atwood, Mr. Miranda, and myself, several staff members walked the Nottingham football field, and we voiced our concerns with some of the things that we felt that weren't up to standard with the way the turf was installed. A representative was there from the company who, who installed the turf, or not that particular turf, he installed West and East, he didn't install that one, but he was there for the company, and he wrote down many, many, many notes and concerns. there for the company and he wrote down many, many, many notes and concerns and he was very, very accommodating. He, he, he understood what we were, what we were trying to bring forward to the, to the, to him and we're looking for a, a positive, you know, outcome to this whole thing. So it's something that we're going to work on and I want to take, I want to just thank some of the board members that brought these to our attention and we're going to, we'll, we'll take care of them as soon as possible. And that was it. There was a couple all committee items, but I'll let somebody else talk about that. Our next meeting is on November 13th at 8:30 a.m.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kanka. So I'm going to ask if anyone has any questions in regards to Mr. Kanka's report, Ms. Burn?
No.
Mr. Salantano?
Nothing on what was reported, however, I'm keeping, I'm going to ask again and I ask this at our meeting, when is this Board of Education going to talk about publicly the potential of this district moving into the municipal complex? When are we going to talk about it? I asked that at the meeting. And I think public deserves to know where we stand. I know we don't have all the information, Rich is right on that one, we don't have all the information. And I think we're procrastinating, it just raises more questions. And I think Ms. Soto told me at the meeting that we had that we shouldn't have had, that a lot of people know about it. Well, I don't know about, a lot of people know about it, the PTAs may know about it. And I, I, I think we're doing a disservice by not discussing this publicly.
Thank you, Mr. Salantano. Ms. Harvey?
No.
Ms. Stanton?
No, thank you.
Nothing, thanks.
No, thank you.
Okay. So before we move on to additional committee reports, I am once again going to change around the agenda just a little bit tonight, so I ask everyone to bear with me. Normally at this time, I would ask Mr. Kanka to give us our negotiations report. But at this time, I am very happy and proud to say that we have come to an agreement with the HTEA. This is wonderful news. It's been wonderful working with you and collaborating and working together and we thank you. I'd like to thank the HTEA Negotiation Committee. You have been wonderful to work with, extremely professional and it's been a pleasure. But at this time, I would like to invite HTEA President Patty Adenizio, if you could actually please come up to the microphone.
Hi there.
Hello. So Ms. Adenizio, it is my understanding that the HTEA has voted on the proposed contract?
We sure did.
And it was approved?
It was approved.
Okay. So at this time, I would like to move item number, if I can, under, sorry, under Personnel. So if I can have someone move I-17 and I do need to add, and actually I apologize, remove number I-18 first, if I may.
What is I-18? It's not on the.
It's the.
That would be I, we are invoking the doctrine of necessity.
So I move item 18 that we invoke the doctrine of necessity.
I want to second that one.
Okay. So.
Do you want to say what it is?
Yes. So I'm just going to, I'd like to make a statement. So this evening, we will be invoking and we are voting on the doctrine of necessity resolution, whereas the School Ethics Act NJSA 18A:12-21 was enacted by the New Jersey State Legislature to ensure and preserve public confidence in school board members and school administrators and to provide specific ethical standard to guide their conduct. And whereas, the School Ethics Commission has provided guidance in Public Advisory Opinion A03-98 with additional opinions issued in 2012, 2014 and 2015 regarding how a board should invoke the doctrine of necessity when a quorum of the Board of Education has conflicts of interest on a matter required to be voted upon. There is also case law which provides guidance on this issue and whereas, the opinion set forth that when it is necessary for a board to invoke the doctrine of necessity, the board should take, should state publicly that it is doing so, the reason that such action is necessary and the specific nature of the conflicts of interest. And whereas, in keeping with the legislative purpose as set forth in NJSA 18A:12-22A, the School Ethics Commission views public disclosure of conflicts of interest to paramount when it is necessary to invoke the doctrine of necessity. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Hamilton Township Board of Education hereby invokes the doctrine of necessity for the reason of approving a memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education and the Hamilton Township Education Association and this doctrine must be invoked to overcome conflicts of interest by board members that would otherwise prevent the board from establishing a quorum capable of approving the agreement. A quorum of the board is five members of this nine-member board. Due to the unanticipated absence of Dr. Jason McSheen, a quorum is five members of the eight members in attendance on October 16th, 2024. Delay of approval of this settlement agreement is not appropriate because the contract with the HTEA expired on June 30th, 2024 and further delay would prevent the implementation of negotiated terms and prevent the payment of negotiated retroactive salary increases. The conflicts are as follows. Anthony Salantano's daughter is an HTEA member. And Christina Harvey was endorsed by the HTEA in the most recent board election, which occurred less than one year ago. And Megan Stanton was endorsed by the HTEA in the most recent board election, which occurred less than one year ago. And Denise Soto was endorsed by the HTEA in the most recent board election, which occurred less than one year ago. And be it further resolved that the Hamilton Township Board of Education is herewith meeting the requirements to read the resolution at a regularly scheduled public meeting, will post it where it posts public notices for 30 days and will provide the School Ethics Commission with a copy of the resolution as required by the decision of the School Ethics Commission. Can I have a roll, roll call, please?
Roll call? Mr. Salantano?
Yes.
Dr. Farrar?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Dr. Kanka?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Burn?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now at this time, may I have someone move the Personnel Item Number 17?
Still moved.
Second.
Do I have any comments or questions in regards to that?
I have a comment.
I just want to thank the people, the board members that negotiated, thank the HTEA. It's always nice when we can come to an agreement in a timely fashion.
Mr. Kanka?
First of all, I would like to thank our team of Mrs. Thornton, Dr. Rocco, Mrs. Atwood and Dr. Copeland for sitting in and going over a lot of detail and data and also Mr. Carrick, our board attorney. We discussed a lot of items. We came to a consensus, you know, within our side, the HTEA presented their side and we worked together diligently and professionally to, to reach this agreement. And I would also like to thank Patty Adenizio and her team for the professionalism that they showed during these negotiations and it was, it was very, very smooth and it was the, you know, the comments and the conduct was, was professional throughout the whole procedure. And I'm glad we came to this agreement. This will, this agreement is monumental to the district and to Hamilton Township. This will put us in the forefront of, you know, salaries and benefits and stuff like that. And hopefully it'll, it'll alleviate some of the challenges we've had in the past on getting staff members to come to Hamilton Township and people looking elsewhere to move for, for better pay or, and better, better coverage with benefits. So I think it was a good agreement. It's long overdue. We've made a lot of sacrifices on our end to help the people that, that teach our kids and I'm, I'm pretty excited to get this thing going and hopefully they are too.
Thank you, Mr. Kanka. So I actually do have something that I would like to read. Unfortunately, Dr. McSheen could not be here this evening, but he did said something, send me something that he would like, he would, wanted read. So he apologized, "I apologize for my unexpected absence, absence from tonight's Board of Education meeting due to illness in my family. However, I write this email to express my support for the adoption of the proposed memorandum of agreement between the Hamilton Township School District and the Hamilton Township Education Association. I have reviewed said memorandum of agreement and believe that it is the result of a collaborative partnership between the HTSD and the HTEA to improve the quality of our schools and advance the support of our educators. In particular, I am pleased to see the update provided in Article 19:1.5 that states, 'Unit Members in the Association shall become eligible for all levels, family, spouse, parent, child, of board paid health, prescription, vision and dental insurances.' This addresses a major concern for potential candidates seeking employment and further supports the educators already dedicating their time to our students. As the husband to a teacher, we have relied on the same coverage that our board has the opportunity to approve tonight. I sincerely thank both the HTSD and the HTEA negotiation teams for producing a beneficial contract that I truly hope is approved by the board this evening. Thank you, Dr. Jason McSheen." Dr. Rocco?
Yeah. I'd just like to say on behalf of my senior leadership, those who negotiated, the team, Ms. Adenizio and your team, as everybody said, this was a professional, professional negotiation. And we know years passed, it hasn't been that way. And sometimes it's gotten contentious and sometimes negotiations aren't necessarily going the way we want them to go. But I think everybody had the right idea in this negotiation and that's doing right by our association and the township. The community has come here many times and we've listened to the community about what they hear we need to do. And this contract addresses that. At the end of the day, we talk often about teamwork and I will say that this contract, although you have two different sides negotiating with two different ideas, we came together as a team to settle this. This is substantial for this district to be able to attract, retain and keep faculty and staff in this district, something that many districts are struggling with today. So I want to thank our negotiating team, everyone who was part of it and your negotiating team and everybody that was part of it. This is wonderful for our township and our students and this Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Rocco. So I'm very happy to ask Ms. Atwood, can you please take a roll call?
Mr. Salantano?
Yes.
Dr. Farrar?
A very happy yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Dr. Kanka?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Burn?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wonderful. Congratulations, everyone. Good job. Thank you, thank you. Ms. Adenizio, the floor is yours.
Where's Janice? It's in cursive. It's quickly written at the kitchen table before I ran over. I just wanted to take a moment to thank a lot of people. First, you know, the negotiation process, we all know, it's just so carefully executed from the moment we meet with our teams right down to ratification. But there are some people that need to be thanked. First is my negotiations team, Annie Chivoni is my vice president, was part of that team. Their hours of dedication and input is appreciated more than they even know. To the HTEA office staff, you, and everybody here knows how important the secretaries are to put the packets together and help us check everybody in and, you know, get the two meetings going, the information meeting and the ratification meeting. So I couldn't have done it without them. And I want to thank the HTEA membership for ratifying the contract and for the board. It was a seamless process. A few bumps in the road here or there, but nothing we couldn't handle, right? So it was a, a nice seamless process and we got the best deal in Mercer County. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank the Board of Ed who negotiated this contract. I negotiate contracts just like Patrick throughout the state. This was, I couldn't agree more, Mr. Kanka, this was the most professional, but it was also driven by one thing that we had in common, bringing the best we could to Hamilton. And this contract does that better than any other district in Mercer County. So congratulations to the board. Thank you so much to your team, we really appreciate it and I can't wait till next time we do this in five years. Thank you very much. Okay. So again, I'll move back to the agenda, but was very excited to be able to announce that. That is something great for Hamilton Township. So I am going to go back to our board committee reports and, Mr. Kanka, negotiations?
Well, as everybody heard, the good news, we, we can only, we can only rest for so little time. We have to move into negotiations of the directors. I reached out to Dr. Altobello, he sent me some dates, I forwarded those dates onto the team and we're looking forward to starting those, starting those talks very, very shortly because we have another one coming up in, in June with the administrators. So we're looking forward to, to meeting with the, with Dr. Altobello and his team and hopefully get this thing out as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Kanka. So I'm going to move over to Personnel Committee, Ms. Soto?
Thank you. I'll be giving tonight's report on behalf of Dr. McSheen. Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, October 9th. In attendance were Board President Ms. Thornton, myself, Committee Chair Dr. McSheen, as well as Dr. Rocco and senior staff. We reviewed a few items that the administration also reviewed with the other committees. Dr. Rocco gave a briefing to the committee on the State Department of Ed CUSACs process, which is the review of the district operations in multiple categories. He also shared that the lease at the Bell App parking lot has increased and discussed some options there. And also shared with us the notice of a proposed formation of a kindergarten readiness committee to support and prepare students and their families who are entering kindergarten in our district. We moved on to Personnel Initiatives and reviewed multiple job descriptions that are on tonight's agenda. These are for, new one, proposed adoption for tonight's aspiring administrator. The development of the aspiring administrator academy at the elementary schools was shared and it will identify elementary staff that are eligible for principal certification to serve as administrators in charge when the principal's out for the, a portion of the day or the day. The job description and stipend were shared and it's just an opportunity to provide experience to individuals within the district seeking careers in administration. In addition, a few revised descriptions were presented. They are the Assistant Operations Supervisor, Operations Supervisor, Secretaries Level 1 and 1A and Leave Replacement, which was formerly known as the Long Term Substitute Position. All those revisions are under a per- that are on tonight's agenda. These are four. New one, proposed adoption for tonight's aspiring administrator. The development of the aspiring administrator academy at the elementary schools was shared. And it will identify elementary staff that are eligible for principal certification to serve as administrators in charge when the principal's out for a portion of the day or the day. The job description and stipend were shared. And it's just an opportunity to provide experience to individuals within the district seeking careers in administration. In addition, a few revised descriptions were presented. They are the Assistant Operations Supervisor, Operations Supervisor, Secretaries Level One and One A, and Leave Replacement, which was formerly known as the Long Term Substitute Position. All those revisions are under Personnel Item Number 14. Second, we also were presented with the permission, a request for conducting research from a staff member. The research was for a doctoral dissertation, and it was supported by the Personnel Committee, but the request met all the requirements by District Policy 3245. And finally, which was to me the most fun part of the committee, we discussed multiple recruitment hiring ideas and had a brief brainstorming section. We covered ideas ranging from traditional advertising to social media outreach. And this discussion will of course continue in future meetings. We also did receive DCR report from Chair Lady Cassandra Hodges-Jones, so I will share that as well. The DCR is looking forward to building a strong relationship with the district stakeholders. The first meeting of the school year was held last night at Wilson Elementary School. They thank Principal Sanchez Ahmed and the custodial staff for the usage and setup of the room. We do have a subcommittee chair and co-chair vacancies, so anybody interested in joining the DCR as a general member or as chair, please email dcr@htsdnj.org. Spanish interpreter Michelle Lowery has volunteered to translate for the DCR committee meetings. And the next meeting is scheduled for November 12 at the West Media Center. And all meetings are from 5 to 6 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. I'm just going to ask if any board members have any questions on Ms. Soto's report. Dr. Farrar?
No.
Ms. Stanton?
No.
Ms. Harvey?
I just had a comment on the aspiring administrator program. I just see and applaud everybody who worked to make that happen. I think that it shows a win-win for the district and for our teachers that we can fulfill our need for coverage while also fulfilling a need to have administrators trained even before they get to that position. And for the teacher, it gives them something to look forward to and gives them the experience to make them an aspiring administrator.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Mr. Salantano?
No ma'am.
Ms. Byrne?
No.
Mr. Kanka?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Dr. Farrar, would you like to give us our curriculum and instruction report?
Indeed.
Thank you.
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee also met on October 9, and all the committee members were present, as well as the administrators, as in the other committee meetings. The CNI Department has posted its fall professional development offerings. The sessions began on October 7 and will run through November 18. Teachers are required to accrue 100 hours of professional development during five-year cycles. There are 10 offerings at the moment, including several which help teachers learn how to use various Google tools. There is a course titled Strategies for Teaching Within 80-Minute High School Block, which is what we're going to next year, is block scheduling. There's also one titled Empower English Language Learners in Your Classroom: A Tech-Powered Transformation. There's also a multi-week course focusing on Google Workspace. The new teacher induction program has also started. This is a four-year program designed to support new teachers in the district during their years prior to receiving tenure. Sessions began this month. Some of the topics to be covered include classroom management, strategies for working with multilanguage learners, also known as sheltered English instruction, and assessment and test design. The committee received copies of the teaching schedule to review. Items up for motions today, which the committee discussed, include motion number four, which asks that we approve the English Language Arts Curriculum Guides. And for those of you with good memories, yes, we did just recently do that. But the guides have been updated due to the recent NJDOE adoption of new ELA standards. Focuses on analyzing text, writing, vocabulary, grammar, research, and speaking and listening. In elementary, it's a deeper focus on phonemic awareness and phonics, which aligns well with our foundations and Orton-Gillingham programs. The approval of these guides is needed as the district prepares for what is called CUSAC, which stands for Quality Single Accountability Continuum. And this is a state review, which happens every three years. The explanation about CUSAC comes from the Department of Education website. The system focuses on monitoring and evaluating school districts in five key components that, based on research, have been identified to be key factors in effective school districts. These components are instruction and program, fiscal, governance, operations, and personnel. And CUSAC starts next spring, correct, Dr. Rocco? Maybe?
Started like three weeks ago. No, there'll be something on next month for you to approve, and then it will pretty much go throughout the winter.
Motion six asks us to approve a new business textbook. The title of the text is Principles of Business. The text will be used in the Introduction to Business class, which is a full-year course, and the first course students take in the district's business management and administrative pathway. Textbook was selected by a committee of teachers along with the district supervisor and Mr. Scotto. The textbook is aligned to curriculum standards. The committee liked the student and teacher resource offerings in the textbook and supplemental materials. There are technology components, and there are writing assignments, which the committee also liked. And when we move the agenda, if there's questions on other things, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Dr. Farrar. So do I have any questions on Dr. Farrar's report for curriculum instruction? Mr. Kanka?
No.
Ms. Byrne?
No.
Mr. Salantano?
No.
Ms. Harvey?
The number nine, Young Audiences, is there, I'm sorry, the number eight, the Knight School of Princeton?
Yes.
Is there any consideration of bringing that program to other schools? I know it's paper by Title I, but we have other Title I schools.
Right. So every Title I school gets an allotment of money, and they all spend it their own way. So Greenwood is spending it on audiences, and Wilson is bringing in chess. So it's really school-specific.
Dr. Rocco?
Just also on that topic, a couple of years ago, Leiler did have a chess program.
I think Greenwood has had one too.
Any other questions, Ms. Harvey?
No, thank you.
Ms. Stanton?
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Soto?
No, thank you.
So I would like to ask Ms. Harvey, I believe there is a PTA committee report?
Actually, I will give the book committee report as well.
Okay.
So first, we'll start with PTA?
Yes.
Thank you. The PTA committee met on September 30, and we met at McGallier. They were very kind in providing refreshments for us. The meeting began with the historical reason for the committee, and it's really to be a bridge of, to provide communication among both the administration, the board, and PTA presidents. So really, it's the PTA's opportunity to ask questions and make sure that we are meeting their needs and that they understand our rules and policies. Then there was discussion about the food initiative that was launched last year. While it was a success, they are revamping how they will be doing it, and there's still discussion as to how to meet that need, because it is still a need of food insecurity in our district. So they're brainstorming. And if members of the community have ideas that they'd like the PTAs to consider, you can contact your local PTA. The third thing they talked about, which Dr. Rocco mentioned, is the Paint the Town Pink Initiative. I wore my pink in anticipation of tomorrow's Pink Day. So wear your pink for breast cancer awareness. And then there, while it wasn't discussed at the meeting, it was raised via email afterwards that the Mercer County Leukemia-Lymphoma Society is holding a Light the Night event on October 26 at Mercer County Park. They are currently seeking out volunteers. The day goes from 9:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. So if you're interested, you can either participate as a volunteer, as a team, and there's more information that the PTAs have that you can contact them if you are interested in supporting that. That's for PTAs. Do you want me to give the quick book committee report? The committee met on September 19, and they had a discussion about the most recent book that's being reviewed, Flamer, and there is a report that is being drafted. There was a discussion about our policies and the book and its role. But we are not ready to issue a report yet.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Do I have any questions on Ms. Harvey's report for the PTA and the books? Ms. Soto?
No, thank you.
Dr. Farrar?
No, thank you.
Ms. Stanton?
No, thank you.
Mr. Salantano?
No ma'am.
Ms. Byrne?
No.
Mr. Kanka?
No.
Okay. So at this time, we are going to move to the monthly suspension report? Any questions? The monthly HIB report? Any questions? And the monthly health report?
Ms. Thornton, there's nothing on the health report, other than I noticed that Wilson and Coosser now have an enrollment of over 500 students in each building.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay. So at this time, we have hearing of the public on agenda items. I am being informed that we do not have anyone signed up for this session, correct? Okay. So we will close that session, and we will move to Agenda, Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Farrar, will you please take us through curriculum and instruction motions?
Yes. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I move items one through 11. Second.
Do I have any questions on any agenda items one through 11 for curriculum and instruction? Ms. Soto?
No, thank you.
Dr. Farrar?
I just want to thank all the people who've been donating gifts. We've had gifts through Donors Choose. We had gifts through, I didn't pull them up, from Robert Wood Johnson. It's lovely to have the community provide things for our students, and we always appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Farrar. Ms. Stanton?
No, thank you.
Ms. Harvey?
No, thank you.
Mr. Salantano?
No ma'am.
Byrne?
No, thank you.
Mr. Kanka?
No.
Ms. Atwood, can you take us through roll call, please?
Mr. Salantano?
Yes, no on number 11.
On number?
11.
Dr. Farrar?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes, on all, except for I recuse from number 11.
Mr. Kanka?
Yes.
Soto?
No to 11, yes on the rest.
Stanton?
Yes, to all, except for no for 11.
Byrne?
No to 11, yes to the rest.
Thornton?
Yes.
So we just want to clarify on number 11. The way it reads right now is that the board accepts the findings of the HIV appeal hearing. So, but the discussion was the opposite of that. So just so we're clear, the no votes are to keep it, or the no votes are to reverse it. It's to keep it, right? Intact?
Correct.
You want to keep the finding intact? Yeah, that's why you said no.
Wait, is the finding, the original administration finding?
That is correct.
So a no vote means you are keeping the administration's finding of a HIB, a yes vote is to reject it. Is that correct?
So we, the way this reads here, I mean, we have to do that, but we have to complete the vote first, though.
Okay.
So the way it reads here, again, is that you accept the findings of the administration, which means that it stays what it was. Okay? So
Which is?
Again, which was a finding of HIV.
Wait. Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah. It doesn't read the same way it was.
Where are you reading?
Can I make, so we opened it, can I make a motion to?
You can't go into executive session until the vote's resolved and counted. So I just want to be clear about this. So right now, the five votes for no would reverse the findings. Okay? So let's leave it at that, because that's how it reads, and that's how it was voted upon.
Excuse me, hold on a second, because I misunderstood.
Yeah, I know.
So if that's the case, then my answer, I need to change my vote.
Yeah, I'd like to change my vote. I don't, it says upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education accepts the finding of the HIB appeal hearing effective October 16.
Yeah, I know.
So the hearing is what the two committee members had met and recommended to the board, right?
It doesn't, no.
That's what it says in our board document.
It says of the HIV appeal hearing. I don't know, like, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I thought the HIV appeal hearing under the regulation is that.
Committee, so normally it would read the committee recommendation. So what?
Right. Yeah, so that would be the two board members who sat in the committee, whatever recommendation they had made in executive session would be the finding. So a yes would be to agree with the two board members, and a no would be to disagree with.
Again, if it said that, I would agree, yes. But, and I understand that to be the intent here. So I just want to be clear, the no votes are, this is going to stay in HIV? Okay.
Don't change my.
Okay.
Yes. So everything passed from what I say, except for number 11.
Correct.
I apologize for the confusion. We just needed to make sure we had clarification.
Put that in English, we didn't understood it.
So we're going to move to Finance and Operation. Mr. Kanka, can you take us through Finance and Operation motions?
Sure. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, I move motions one through 14 for Finance and Operation.
Second.
Any questions?
Do any board members have any questions on Finance and Operation? Mr. Kanka?
No. What's in there? I just, could I make a comment on one of the motions?
Of course you can.
On number 10, the Food Service Financials. I was, I was really, really, I looked at the report that was left here, and I was really excited when I saw the increase from last year to this year. That tells me either we got parents that believe in what we're doing, and they're sending their kids to school to get lunch and breakfast, because the increase is substantial. And I'm really excited to see that we have a food service that's more appealing to the parents and the students. And when the two gentlemen were up here, I did look at those pictures, and it really, it made me want to go to the refrigerator. So there's really, really appetizing delicacies here, and let's just hope they can keep it up the whole year.
Thank you, Mr. Kanka. Ms. Byrne? Any questions?
Questions?
Oh, no.
Mr. Salantano?
I just want to get this clarified. Number 12, the one with the agreement with Hamilton Grove, the way I read this, the way I understand it, the way I think I read it, the way I think I understand it, is that there's been no movement from the number that we had from the last contract, correct?
Correct.
Not exactly. We are approving. We're, we are approving that there's no movement and we're, they're going to have further negotiations and come back to us.
That's, that's what I wanted to hear.
So you're just approving the amount that we've been paying.
That's what I thought, I understood, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Salantano. Mr. Kanka?
I mean, there was, we submitted our proposal, we have heard nothing back.
I, I see that, there it is.
From the, from, whatever, it's Hamilton Grove.
Grove.
And so we're just waiting on that and, and we'll move on from there.
It'll be like China Grove.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Salantano?
I'm good.
Ms. Harvey?
I just want to piggyback on Mr. Kanka, that the food service provider, and I thank them for coming tonight, they, they really have been doing a great job and the app makes life so much easier for working parents. And my daughter went from buying only occasionally to now nearly buying every day. So I'm very happy.
That's great to hear, thank you. Ms. Stanton?
Oh, thank you.
Dr. Farrar?
No, thank, thank you.
Ms. Soto?
No, thank you.
Ms. Atwood, can you take us through roll call, please? Mr. Salantano?
Yes.
Dr. Farrar?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes, to all except for finance, motion seven and num, line 17, I abstain.
Mr. Kanka?
Yes.
Ms. Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Ms. Thornton?
Yes.
Motion's pass. Personnel, Dr. Farrar, can you take us, I'm sorry, Ms. Soto, can you take us through personnel items?
Sure. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, I move items one through 16.
Second.
Do I have any questions on personnel items? Ms. Soto?
No.
Dr. Farrar?
No.
Harvey?
No.
Mr. Salantano?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Byrne?
No.
Mr. Kanka?
No.
I actually did have a few items. So on number 14, which is the job descriptions.
Oh, okay.
So under the job descriptions, we have several as Dr. Farrar reported, I'm sorry, as Ms. Soto, I keep getting you two mixed up, I'm sorry. As Ms. Soto reported during the personnel agenda item, personnel committee report. I'm asking just because I received some information in regards to items D and E and I'm asking if the board will table them so that we can get some clarification until next month's meeting. So I'm asking for those two items to be tabled this time.
Which items?
I'll make a motion to table.
14, D and E.
I'll make a motion to table D and E under item 14 on the personnel.
Second. Ms. Atwood? Can I get a? Mr. Salantano?
Yes.
Dr. Farrar?
Yes, except I abstain on 14.
No, we're just doing, just the tabling.
Oh, just the table.
Not the other items.
Got it, yes, sorry.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Kanka?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
14, D and E tabled. Thank you. So at this time, I would like to.
Madam President?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Salantano.
I, I missed something here before.
Okay, please.
Under the revised job descriptions, okay? Unless I go get the old job description, I have no idea to what the changes are in here. Normally you highlight them. So what am I missing? I had, there's, there's two jobs that were researched.
So they are, they were highlighted, they were highlighted for personnel and they're in the board docs for everybody to be viewable that were posted after the meeting. There are some language changes to it and there's also the addition, every one of the documents has requirement of a background check, correct, Dr. Copeland? Any, any other substantial changes that the board should know of that we talked about?
That's, that's fine, I just, you know, when I looked at it, normally used to getting.
Oh, licensing too, requirement to drive, correct?
I'm sure it's fine.
Any other questions, Mr. Salantano?
I'm good.
At this time, I would like to recognize, we do have two retirements and I would like to recognize them. So 25 years' service to Hamilton District School Psychologist, Maryam Kimcheck. 24 years' service to Hamilton, teacher of mathematics at Hamilton High School West, William Zelingowski. I would like to thank you so much for your dedication to Hamilton Township and we wish you all the best in your retirement. Ms. Atwood, can you take us through roll call, please? Mr. Salantano?
Yes.
Dr. Farrar?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Kanka?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Yes, but I do need to abstain on 5A3. Motion's pass. Thank you. So I do have hearing on, of the public on school-related matters. So at this time, please remember, I'm going to call each individual up. You do have four minutes. We ask that when you come up to the microphone, you just please state your name for the record. And I have Ms. Janice Glonick. And Ms. Glonick, before you do start, I did notice that you were not here last month.
I was just going to say, I hope you enjoyed the meeting last month.
We missed.
I wasn't here.
We missed you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, while I was in Germany, I happened to, uh, there, this very nice guy, I says, do you teach cursive in Germany? And they said, yes. And so then I was telling him about the problems we're having here, trying, I'm trying to get, you know, into the curriculum that you have to be able to read it as well as write it. And he like did a double take, he couldn't believe that was possible. And he said, which a couple of people in the group were really impressed with as well, what's the harm in learning something? You never know when you'll use it, which is precisely what I've been saying. You need to know how to read cursive. We need to put that in, like I said, just a half hour for two days a week. Write the sentence in cursive, read the sentence in cursive and print it out to see if you know what it says because you'll never know when you need it. And someone also, Mr. Kanka, knows about cursive writing being important, he told me something. And then also, there's people talking about the Constitution. That's written in beautiful cursive and you can't read it unless you see it printed out. You need to know how to read cursive. We need to get that into the curriculum, like Germany does. Okay? And so that was most impressive there. Very nice report by Dr. Farrar about Alexandra Stupendis. I was very impressed with that, really good. And in order to keep with what we're doing, it would be nice, we have one leaky faucet in the kindergarten that hasn't been fixed for, they can't seem to get it fixed, but we need that fixed so that it doesn't drip. Because when you push it off really hard, then they can't get it on again. So that needs to get attended to. And then I would just like to say that it was so nice today to come into the meeting and there was somebody at the door telling you how to find the room. That was outstanding because you go to these buildings and people who have never been here like me don't know where we're going to try to find where the meeting is, but there was somebody right there saying, go down there, turn right, it's right there. And where the bathrooms were and everything, so that was most stupendous. It would be nice if we keep that up too, as well as the cursive writing. So I'm back, guys, hope you enjoyed last month, but thank you for missing me.
Thank you, Ms. Glonick. You know we miss you when you're not here. So next I have Malik Gedni. I apologize if I didn't pronounce that correctly.
Good evening, council members, administrators, Dr. Rocco and the community. My name is Malik Gedni and I'm a sophomore at Steiner High School and I've attended school in the Hamilton Township School District for 10 years. Today I stand before you to discuss a pressing issue that affects our education system, the implementation of block scheduling in our high schools. This change has generated significant debate and we must consider both its benefits and drawbacks. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the student body whose voices are often overlooked in decisions that profoundly affect our education. Before I get into further detail, I surveyed students across Hamilton High Schools and the overwhelming majority of students oppose this change. Before you move forward with enforcing block scheduling, I believe it's critical that you hear and truly understand why this decision will hurt our learning and not help it. Proponents of block scheduling argue that it allows students to delve deeper into each subject. With extended class periods, teachers have, teachers have more time to engage students with complex materials, fostering a richer understanding. However, we must weigh these benefits against the challenges this system presents. First, the length of time spent in class can be physically and mentally draining and many students report feelings of stress, lack of motivation and boredom during prolonged sessions. A significant concern is continuity in learning. If we opt for an AB, if we opt for an AB block schedule, students' subjects could shift daily and this inconsistency can hinder their ability to retain information, particularly when they're only revisiting subjects after a day's delay. Furthermore, studies have shown that students in block scheduling formats may perform worse in critical subjects like science, biology, physics and mathematics. This is alarming, especially considering the demands of today's academic landscapes. Attention spans among teenagers present also another layer of complexity. On average, a 14-year-old has an attention span of 28 minutes while 16-year-olds can range from 32 to 48. Our recent survey at Hamilton Township revealed that about 56% of students can focus for only 15 to 30 minutes and 22 can sustain attention for 30 to 60 minutes. This indicates that longer class periods could exacerbate issues related to, related to focus and productivity. Additionally, multitasking during extended lessons can lead to increased stress and fatigue. The need for students to adapt to 80-minute class fragments when many struggle with the current 40-minute structure raises valid, raises valid concerns. We simply cannot stay engaged for such long periods. The traditional schedule keeps us active and focused because it's structured in a way that works with our natural attention spans. Extending class time will result in more students zoning out, becoming fatigued and frankly not learning effectively. This isn't just a minor issue, it's fundamental to our ability to succeed. Attendance is another critical issue since the COVID-19 pandemic, students' absenteeism rates have soared, with chronic absenteeism rates in New Jersey now at 13.3%. And according to the Hamilton Township Performance Reports, 34% of students accumulate six to 10 absences per year, 18 have 11 to 15 and 15 have over 15 absences. Missing just one 80-minute class can significantly impact the students' learning and retention. I experienced this firsthand in middle school during the 2022, 2023 school year due to being absent to a chronic illness and I've occurred numerous absences and found it incredibly challenging to catch up to lessons, especially when those lessons were 80 minutes, 80 minutes long. Another significant concern with block scheduling is potential impact on internship programs such as the volunteer internship program at Steiner. This program provides students with critical real-world experiences and opportunities that are invaluable post-graduation and if block scheduling disrupts VIP, it risks denying students, including myself, the chance to gain essential skills and connection. Both my siblings benefited immensely from the VIP program with my sister even gaining admission to Princeton University. If we compromise this program, we are stripping away similar opportunities for future generations. To conclude, while block scheduling presents certain advantages, we must carefully consider the broader implications on students' well-being, academic performance and opportunities for personal growth. It is essential to strike a balance that promotes a conducive learning environment while also prepping us for our futures. The purpose of any educational reformist should be to enhance learning, not to hinder it. Block scheduling as proposed is not in the best interest of the students and the result of our surveys prove that. The majority of students oppose this plan and we're asking you to reconsider this decision before it is too late. We urge you to listen to the voices of those who are directly affected, the students and teachers, and work with us to find a better solution that will improve our learning environment. Thank you and have a good night.
So first, I want to thank you for getting up and speaking. It's not easy to get in front of a room and talk. We've gone back and forth through some email. So just to let everybody know, there'll be a student group and I've already invited you to be part of that student group to address some of the concerns. I also want to let the public know that we're updating you from the moment that we made the decision that we wanted to go to block scheduling, asked parents to, and students to submit frequently asked questions, which we are answering. Also, there is a large committee of administrators, supervisors, other personnel that have been meeting for six months now and will be, are committed to meeting every month, planning forward, and then after the implementation, meeting for another year. There's training, professional development, book studies, all kinds of different activities. So the next step is also to have the students come in and start working with us and address concerns that you have in some of the studies that you've done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rocco. So next I have Sophie Aguilar.
Good evening, board members, administrators and community. My name is Sophie Aguilar and I'm also a sophomore at Steiner High School. For my entire education, I have attended school in the Hamilton District. Today I want to address a crucial issue that affects our youth, teen mental health. The well-being of our students is highly important and it's essential, it's essential that we create and maintain a positive environment for them to thrive, both academically and personally. One significant factor that can impact teen mental health is the structure of their school day. Many schools have adopted block scheduling, which involves longer classes, class periods, but fewer subjects per day. As Malik said, this system has its benefits, such as allowing for more in-depth explorations of subjects, but it also has several drawbacks that can diminish students' mental health. Firstly, longer class periods can lead to increased stress. Students are required to focus intensely on a single subject for extended periods, which can be mentally exhausting. According to a study published in the Journal of Educational Psychology, prolonged focus without breaks can lead to higher levels of stress and anxiety among students. Additionally, block scheduling reduces the variety in students' days. Instead of engaging with multiple subjects, students are confined to just a few, which can make the school feel tedious and draining. Lack of variety can also limit opportunities for social interaction and creative expression, both of which are vital for maintaining a positive mental state. To support these points, consider the findings from the National Education Association, which highlight that students in schools with block scheduling report higher levels of fatigue and burnout compared to those in traditional schedules. These students often feel overwhelmed by the intensity and volume of work, leading to a decline in their overall, overall well-being. In conclusion, while block scheduling may offer some academic advantages, it's crucial to weigh these against a potential negative impact on teen mental health. By recognizing the importance of a balanced and varied school day, we can create a more supportive and positive environment for our students. Let's prioritize their mental health and ensure that our educational system foster not just academic success, but also the overall well-being of our students. Thank you for taking the time to listen, have a great night.
Thank you very much. Alexandra DeFalco?
Thank you. My name is Alexandra DeFalco, I live at 3522 Drive. And I guess something I should have said at the previous meeting I spoke at is I just want to thank you guys. I don't think I would have gotten where I am without the environment that the Hamilton Township School District provided me. So I just want to thank you guys. I'm doing great as a, speaking as a graduate from this district, so I just, I feel like I owe you guys a thank you. And I just wanted to just talk about the importance of test scores and the importance of data provided by test scores. So some of the arguments I've been, I should preface this by saying that I'm aware that test scores aren't everything, but I think they provide us a useful data point that can determine, can be used to determine where our district is. So just, for example, I've heard this argument before, that they're just a snapshot, they're just a small portion of the problem. Well, I mean, as someone who has taken these tests before in the semi-recent past, I can speak to the fact that complete mastery of the topics like mathematics. that complete mastery of the topics like mathematics or like language arts is not required to achieve proficiency on these tests. So there's a lot of variability to it. I'd also like to, I also think this argument doesn't work because we have a very large sample size for these tests. For example, six thousand one hundred and sixty-three valid test scores were taken, and factored into the data in our latest data point. And I think the sample size provides us enough information to say that these test scores are a acceptable point of data, and they should be used that way. Another argument I've been hearing is that improvement is the most, is most important, it's prioritized everywhere else. And I somewhat agree with this, I think that improvement is extremely important, but I also think that what takes priority over that is making sure that our students are prepared for the real world and are prepared for college. I think that the priority should be preparing, making sure the children are ready for college and the real world, and that, a lot of that has to do with language arts and mathematics proficiency. And I also see some issues with, I don't think our district is improving at an adequate rate. For example, the last two data points I have, I've looked at, shows that we have seen a three percent increase in the last two data points in English and language arts, which I think is a good progress. But in mathematics, we've seen pretty much complete stagnation with zero point one percent. So for these reasons, I think that it's important for the board to prioritize and address this, and I think this should be an utmost priority of the board, so, thank you, thank you.
Chanel Vickers Ames?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Steph Gack. My name's Chanel, Hamiltonian. I just wanted to come up and inquire on the crosswalk safety flashlights, where we are, and how many schools are still left to be updated, and also I wanted to know who was responsible, the district or the township, with riding slow on the road, on the roads, because it is seen, it is noticed, the neighborhood is talking, we appreciate it. But just a little suggestion, to add the miles per hour with it. I know I'm reaching, but it's worth it. And I also want to say thank you to whoever put it there, because it caught my eye, I snapped the picture, and I sent it to my buddy over there, and was like, "Look at this." I was like, "When did this get here?" So we do appreciate it, especially in the Wilson West neighborhood, it is seen, and I do see people slowing down just by noticing the words on the road. So if we can add just a little bit more, twenty-five miles per hour underneath the snow, I would appreciate it, and I think the neighbors would also. That's it.
Thank you. Yes.
We're not going to get into the practice of responding during the open mic periods, because we typically don't, but this is a topic that's come up many times. Just want to know that we did write to the Commissioner of Transportation, we do have another, some work by the DOT that's going to be done in the intersection of Route Thirty-three and Klockner Road, in the vicinity of Klockner Elementary and Nottingham High School. And we have a copy of a letter sent from the Commissioner of Transportation, O'Connor, that that work is going to happen. They're going to do a, at the intersection, no pedestrian crossing, using the crosswalk signs, walk indicators, five-second lighting, and some lighting changes, so, so we're making progress in that area.
And I just wanted to add, Ms. Vicker Ames, you have been such a champion for this, and I thank you, because it truly is all about the safety and security of our community, and I just want to thank you, because you have come up so many times over the years, and, you know, I commend you on that. Okay, so that concludes hearing of the public on school-related matters, I'm going to move to other business. So I'll start, I do know that there was mention to adjust the board meeting for next month, November, is that correct? Or? Yes, okay, so I just want to remind everyone, if that's something that we wanted to discuss, I didn't know what the proposed date was.
Thank you, original date was on a Monday, and I think when we had our meeting, I think Christina brought it up, that we probably should move it to the Wednesday, the twentieth, which would be our normal third Wednesday. And so, did we advertise it as the eighteenth?
We did.
And I think that was in anticipation of Thanksgiving, but Thanksgiving is the following week, am I correct? So the twentieth would be viable, doable and makes sense.
Was there a reason why it was listed as Monday right now?
I just think, Megan, that it may have been that, when we did it, or whoever did it, or however it was that they thought Thanksgiving was.
Thanksgiving.
Because normally, in past years, I think we would have it the Monday before Thanksgiving, but I like this idea better, it's the Wednesday before the week of Thanksgiving.
Right, normally, we usually have it that Monday, but it just falls later this year, being the last week, so.
Right.
I mean, is there something, I just want to double check on our district calendar, if there's something on the, everyone's looking for the twentieth to change it back to the Wednesday?
That would be my proposal.
We're confirming there's nothing as of right now?
I don't see any conflict, I'm just going to take, if we can just take a second for my senior staff to look and see if there's any conflict. I see nothing on the district calendar, Star Boyle's up there, I can see he's looking also right now. I don't see any conflict here at this time.
I would like to make a motion to change the date of the board meeting from November eighteenth to November twentieth.
I'll second that.
Where's the location of the meeting? Just give me one second on that. West? Give me one second on that.
We may have to have it in a parking lot, but what's the difference?
I just, I'm going to go to West's page, and I'm going to take a look.
Let's make sure there's no orientations or anything like that, being that time of year. So just bear with us for just a moment, we just want to confirm.
I don't see any conflict at West on the twentieth, we will reach out to the school to make sure that the facility is still available. If the board wants to change it to the twentieth, and the motion goes through, with the caveat that if we can't have it at West, we'll have it at another location.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor for Ms. Harvey, do we have a second?
Yes.
Oh yeah, Tony's second.
Ms. Atwood?
To change the November board meeting from the eighteenth to the twentieth.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you. Do I have any other items for other business? I'll start, Ms. Soto? Dr. Farrar?
I do, tonight I would like to give the community another example of the district's professional development programs. In addition to the offerings which come from the Curriculum and Instruction Department, individual schools also hold professional development sessions, sometimes during faculty meetings. The Crockett Middle School Administration held such a session right before school started. They invited author Denise Bard to come talk to them about her experiences as a student here in the district. Many of our teachers actually attended school with Denise Bard and shared the same teachers. Brian Smith, the principal at Hamilton High West, told me he was a senior at West when Denise was a freshman. Denise published a book this past February titled Thirty Second Moments and the Women Who Raised Me. The title is a double entendre in that it talks about her upbringing with her mother and grandmother, as well as the lessons she learned from other women in her life, including some from the Hamilton Township School District teaching. Denise was born to a sixteen-year-old drug-addicted mother, her time at home was always difficult, the messages were not uplifting, they were defeating. She doesn't go into great detail about her life with her mother and grandmother, just enough to help the reader understand that she was not wanted, not really loved, that she tried as a child and then as a teen to weather the storms as best she could. What got her through many of those upsets were what she calls thirty-second moments, encounters with her female teachers. The smiles they provided, the encouraging words they shared with her, the help they quietly gave her during hard times. Those short encounters gave her hope, they helped build resilience. When she found herself at a police station facing arrest for running away, those thirty-second moments helped her find the voice she needed to say, "I don't want to go back home." And so she was taken to Anchor House in Trenton, her time there was transformative. She now sits on the board of Anchor House, and she speaks to educators. She helps them understand how the power of those thirty-second moments, listening, kindness, encouragement, helping a student be seen, make a very big impact on a student's life. Teaching is so much more than imparting knowledge, grading papers and test scores, and Denise's book celebrates that. She will be speaking at Reynolds next week, and there are plans to bring her to West in the spring, and her book is a quick one-hundred-and-two-page read, and I highly recommend it.
Thank you, Dr. Farrar. Dr. Farrar, what was her last name?
Bard, B-A-R-D.
Bard.
Thank you. Ms. Stanton?
Thank you.
Ms. Harvey?
Thank you.
Mr. Salantano?
No ma'am.
Byrne? Mr. Jankka?
No.
So seeing that there's no other business, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone, have a wonderful evening.